Good evening. At this time, I'll call the monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council to order. Welcome everyone who's here tonight. We have quite a few, quite a bit of business to conduct. First item of business is a moment of silence, and I'll ask everyone, please, to bow their heads. Amen. Counsel, we have before you tonight the agenda for tonight's meeting. What is your wishes on that?
Move it. We adopt.
Got a motion and a second. Any changes, additions, deletions to it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we'll open the meeting to anyone who has comments. We do have a notation here that the manager is going to contact. Yeah, Gerard. Oh, okay. Yep. I've got it checked off. Counsel, we have before you tonight the approval for the minutes of the regular meeting and the closed section meeting in March. What are your wishes at this time?
Move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Now we'll go to item number five. Comments. Gerard Morrison, you're going to contact him, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Hello?
Hey, is this Gerard?
Yes, this is Matt.
Yeah, this is Matt. I'm at the Hamlet City Council meeting. We're calling for your public comment, and you can proceed.
Okay, appreciate you. Good afternoon, everybody, and I wanted to call in and thank you all for the letter from the mayor and Matt representing the city for my late, great paternal grandmother, Mr. Dorothy Louise Strong Johnson. We read it, um, we read the resolution of the letter at the funeral, so I wanted to thank you all for that. It's always good to see compassion and miss all this COVID and just humanity in general. So I wanted to give you all a loud and resounding thank you from the family. Also, I wanted, uh, last year we had some tech, last month, we had some technical difficulties. But I wanted to recognize all the ladies who've made history in Hamlet and abroad from me and just show appreciation to the, to the mothers of the universe and let you know that you are appreciated. And lastly, this month, I wanted to bring attention to April thirtieth for International Jazz Day. That's April thirtieth. So in the spirit of John Coltrane and the John Coltrane Music Edutainment Festival, scheduled for October second at twelve noon this year, it'll be our thirteenth annual and the second virtual John Coltrane festival. And being this is the birthplace, we've got to send some positive vibes in the universe for International Jazz Day. Lastly, I just want to, I'd love to, uh, have opinions on the, uh, website in general because I've been getting feedback and I've shared it with Matt too. How folks, when they want to reach some of the council, uh, you know, they like, you know, they want, they have to go through the city. If someone wanted to reach them directly, so I just strongly suggest, you know, people will add their names, their elected officials, and they come publicly to get the votes, and they did directly with the folks, and I think, you know, from the folks that have talked with me, they want to be able to reach them, especially after business hours, in case, you know, there's some concerns that can't hap, that can't get done, you know, but, uh, after five. So it's one of the few places, you know, I love home, but, uh, honestly, it's the only place I've ever seen where contact information to reach the elected officials is not public. So just strongly suggest that. And lastly, I, um, want to challenge us to really explore and not just shake our heads, but really explore, and I like to have feedback, tonight or definitely in the future, on how we can go about making it a combination of a district at-large system for all the municipalities in Richmond County, and starting with the leader in my mind, Hamlet. Because I think things like we went through, the tax issue as well as other things, would you make sure you comb the issue and also give the representatives time to go ahead and focus on a particular area, you know, and be truly a representative government. But that's my comments. Hope everybody's having a good day and happy April, and enjoy the April showers and the May flowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard.
Thank you, Gerard.
Okay, do we have anyone else tonight that's in here and wants to speak? Please come up to the podium, ma'am, and state your name and your business.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Williams. My brother and I attended the meeting last month, and we expressed our concerns about the property for, for next door to us. And according to my notes, the attorney was going to speak to the Richmond County attorney to see what possible solutions that could be made because if you were here last month, then you saw the pictures that we presented, and you know what condition this property is. But not only that property, we have about eleven or twelve properties on Pine Street alone that is empty. So it's, 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 if you don't have a solution to this problem, and we can't rent them, sell them, renovate them, and if they don't pay taxes on them, what new blood is going to move into this town? And we are losing a lot of people here. So my, this is my follow-up meeting to see what solution you had if you had gotten in touch with the Richmond County attorney.
Go ahead, Mr. Morpheus.
I wish I could provide new information for you. I've been trying to get in touch with the, it's, it's not the Richmond County attorney, it's an outside attorney who works for the county doing tax foreclosure suits. And I believe it or not, I've been playing phone tag with him for several weeks now. What I promised you is I would get back with you as to where it is in the foreclosure process. And as soon as I get that information, I'll pass it on so that you can have that information, ma'am.
Well, explain to me what, what exactly happened in foreclosure. Do you sell the property? Do you put it up for auction? Do you, what do you do?
So what the county has been doing, and this is a process many local governments use, is if there are properties that have not paid their taxes for some time, uh, they have what's called a lien on the property. That means they have a right to collect those taxes. And the county, for several years now, has been using an attorney who does this for a living to get a judgment for the, against those properties that have not had their taxes paid. It gives them a right to sell the property to collect those taxes. That's what they mean by foreclosure. So they literally have a sale on the courthouse steps for properties where taxes are owed. And what I do not know for you, ma'am, is where the Pine Street property is in that foreclosure process. Because it can take, it has taken several years for any one of these properties. So it, it, it could have been in foreclosure for several years. So I apologize, but I do not have a good answer for you tonight.
So I, I will be attending these meetings because, you know what, this is my community at stake here. And if I don't fight for my community, nobody else is going to do that. And if these houses have been in foreclosure for you, and I know the, the, the one next to me has been in foreclosure for at least seven, eight years. So, uh, you know, that's inexcusable. When you don't pay taxes, when you can't sell it, nobody's willing to buy it, and you won't rent it. If I didn't pay taxes on my property, what do you think would happen to me? So it's unfair to me to be a modest citizen and pay taxes and do everything that I'm supposed to do. And you look at these people that are getting away, they don't, they don't abide by the law. So I, I, I'm just thoroughly disgusted with this. And if you ever drive up Pine Street, how many of you have driven up Pine Street in the last couple?
I'm very familiar with that area.
Yep.
And I commend you for having the courage to come and speak to the council and speak out. And it is a really, really a bad, bad situation, dilapidated houses. It is really unsanitary in a lot of ways. And Spring Street's getting just about as bad. So I commend you for coming up, speaking out, and asking for help on that.
Well, my concern is that it's warm and teenagers and kids are in this house. And sometimes I just see maybe a cigarette. It's dangerous for me going in and out, and it's dangerous for those kids who play around this area. The chimney has already fallen in, in the wa, uh, no, driveway. Nobody has come to, you know, do anything about it. And the guy that's supposed to own this property lives right around the corner. He passes by this property every day.
And, and the frustration is probably just, I can't imagine it, that I would be fighting. And Mr. Morpheus has promised to help, and we'll hold him accountable to that, to give you some good information in what we can do.
And the main point is, is the city cannot do anything.
The city cannot.
We can't, you can come to all the meetings, but we still can't do anything. They've got us, just like they've got you.
Ms. Williams, does our manager or city clerk have your contact information? Okay, very good. So when I have something, I'll, I'll pass it on to them so we can communicate.
Well, now, when you say that, I've called and visited the city hall numerous times.
Yes, ma'am.
And now I can't say who has it and who don't have it, so if you need it, I will give it to you.
If, if you would, that would be excellent.
Thank you.
And if you could just write down phone, if you, and then email if you have it, and just give that to me. I can make sure to communicate with you when I have, um, when I have something useful for you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And please stay in touch with the council and the city.
Oh, I'll be here every Tuesday until this is resolved.
And what's that exact address? I know there's several on Pine Street, but what's that?
Four zero four Pine Street. If you pass by there, you won't miss it.
Miss it. No, there's several houses that you won't miss on there.
Well, I'm describing, you walk out of my front door, there's one, two, three vacant houses across the street. You walk out of my door, you turn left, there's the, the house that I'm speaking of, but they also, there's the apartments that are vacant. And you walk into my house to the right, there's, uh, the house is occupied, but the next house is vacant. So I'm surrounded by vacant houses.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. And you need some relief, the community needs some relief from it.
The community needs some, we need someone that's going to take care of it.
And it's a hard, as, as the mayor said, it's a difficult situation, but it's something, a fight we've got to get into.
But if you don't ever start working on it, you never know, you won't gain anything.
But we have, Ms. Williams, we, we have been working on that situation, not just with your residents that you're talking about, but all over the city. It's just not in those areas, unfortunately. We could go get in the car right now, we could ride around, and we could see houses in just different, difficult states of despair all over the city. I mean, in every area of the city. Unfortunately, the problem is the people don't take
Pride.
pride in their homes and their communities anymore. Trash everywhere you look. And this is not something, if we could fix it, we would fix it. We would fix it right now. But this is legal issues that are dealt with on the state level. And unfortunately, some of these things go on, how long have we had, um, some of the properties on these lists, and nothing's ever done? Fifteen, twenty years. And it's not fair to you as a homeowner that takes pride in the community. And it's not fair to the, to the citizens of Hamlet that we can't do anything about it due to the legal ramifications. The process that Mr. Morpheus is talking, and just so you're a hundred percent aware, this is not something that's going to be fixed in the next couple of weeks, month, or anytime soon.
I am aware.
This is something that could carry on for a long time, and it, it makes me sick to my stomach to know that you're having to deal with that and other people are having to deal with that. But if there was anything that we could do to fix it, I would be all in.
But I walk around the city too, and I've noticed that there's a house on High Street that's been torn down. There's a house on Washington Street that's been torn down, then there's a house on West Street that's been torn down. How do these houses get torn down in my street? You never hit my street.
Yeah. She, she can, uh, Ms. Ms. Strickland can explain, explain the process on that to you.
I no longer do code enforcement, but I have done code enforcement. We have taken houses down on Pine Street. The other end of Pine Street, just in the last couple of years, several were taken down. The city has a long list, a long list. It's usually the ones that are the most imminent threat, depending on the condition they're in, uh, depending on what's going on around in the area with it. Uh, that's what we do. They just took one down on Spring Street that was a burned structure that when they went to take it down, it was in such a dilapidated state that when the piece of equipment hit it, it pretty much just self-imploded.
And I believe this is the, this is what would happen to four, because as I said, one chimney has already fallen down, and you've got two more that's kind of leaning on.
The situation of what you're discussing, I think, now, don't hold me to this because I know there's several on Pine Street, but I know where the apartments, it's a triplex is and the house beside of it. Those were left, it was a family, all deceased, was really left to no one for the longest time, could not contact anyone, could not get in touch with anyone. Ms. Lowry, that is now handling code enforcement, was able to make contact with someone within the last year or so. The person was to do certain things. The city's allowed to add fines to the property, which they did. We add fines until the fines exceed the value of the property.
Yep.
And then we're at a standstill. Unless we, unless we raise taxes to take down all these dilapidated houses, the city doesn't have the money to do so. I mean, it, there's, there's a long list, and we have to prioritize based on the situation that they're in. But, uh, we probably have a list of, like I said, I don't do code enforcement now, but I'm sure there'd be a list of at least twenty, if not more, houses that are in a state that they would want to come down. As far as a house being vacant, there's nothing we can do if a house is not rented. We can't make somebody move in it. We can't make somebody sell. But we are governed by rules from the state that we have to go by.
Well, according to my sources and my dad, the Edens, that apartment, that house and the apartment and the White House across the street.
All of those houses were the Edens houses at one time.
But can the city make and make the repairs? We cannot. We have, we have rules we have to follow by adding the fines to the property, which has been done.
Well, we know that because, I mean, the city hall has told us, you know, they owe over fifty thousand dollars of fines. And they're not going to pay that because they don't have the money, but they're not going to do anything else to the property either. And the Eden grandson lived right around the corner from the property. He just helped.
But if he's not the property owner, and even if he is, the city can't make him take the property down.
I'd like to just jump in and add that following your attendance at the last public comment, I went out and visited the property. I took some photos myself. Um, I also, um, looked into our file, and we've taken this, this code enforcement case up to the point of the next step would be an order for demolition. So it's pretty much at that point where we've done up, up to demolishing the property. We've, we've taken all the administrative steps that we can. I'd like to just make sure, as Mr. Morpheus mentioned, that I get your contact information. I'd be happy to meet with you and discuss, and perhaps, you know, come out and visit the property with you, and I'd be, I'd be happy to make time to do that.
Be happy to have you.
Also, once the county's got that in foreclosure, there's nothing we can do to it. Am I right, Mr. Morpheus?
Well, we can do nuisance abatement, um, at any time of the process, as long as it's under jurisdiction. But to Ms. Strickland's point, there's a cost involved, and, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, if we, uh, pay for the demolition of the house and the clearing, and then there's a foreclosure sale, the lien that the city has for that money would get wiped out, so there'd be no way that we could get the money spent back.
Um, I thought similarly, how much money would it cost if this had been torn down?
Our last demolition was somewhere close to, I think, I think it was like a little over ten, but less than fifteen.
Usually a demolition runs between eight thousand and twelve thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move along. Uh, we have the pleasure of the night to minister the oath of office for our new chief of police, Mr. Dennis Brown.
It's not like that's done.
I, repeat after me, please. I, what is your name?
I, Dennis Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant?
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws?
To enforce the criminal laws
Of this state.
Of this state.
I will not be influenced?
I will not be influenced
In any manner?
In any manner.
On account of personal bias?
On account of personal bias?
Or prejudice?
Or prejudice.
That I will support, maintain?
That I will support and maintain?
The constitution and laws?
The constitution and laws?
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina?
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially?
Discharge and execute?
Discharge and execute?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office?
As chief of police?
As chief of police?
According to the best of my skill?
According to the best of my skills?
Abilities and judgment?
Abilities and judgment. So help me God. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving along to item number seven is consideration of Richmond County under local agreement and resolution, twenty-one oh-two, the relinquishment of a portion of the ETJ. City clerk or the manager, either one of you want to comment on this?
Sure, I'll, I'll speak briefly to it and defer to the attorney as needed for some of the legalities or maybe some of your questions. Basically, uh, the, whenever a parcel has two zoning jurisdictions from two different, um, two different zonings from two different jurisdictions, or in other words, a split-zone parcel, the property owner can approach the, uh, the, the respective jurisdictions and request that one of the zoning rules prevail over the other. In this case, I believe there's five separate parcels in which the property owners have requested to defer the zoning to Richmond County. And that is the, is executed by mutual agreement and a resolution between the two governing bodies and allows the developer to proceed under one zoning or the property owner, or whatever the case may be.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to add, uh, this is a relatively new authority that we have. You know, we sometimes talk about one sixty D, those that overhaul the development statutes. This is a new statute that came along with that. Prior to this statute, you really couldn't just by an agreement shift jurisdiction to, to one local government or the other. So it's a new opportunity, and you're under no obligation to approve it, but you certainly can if you want.
Uh, my understanding is, is if you go out Wiregrass Road and make a left turn back toward Rockingham, it'll be property on the right past the corner little convenience store there, and it's how many properties? Five properties, and they're going to build houses on it, I assume. So that's where we are on that. So what are your wishes, counsel? Got a motion to approve?
A second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion on it? Question?
I would just like to add that this is part of the ETJ that has been publicly stated, um, by the county that we have turned over to them already. We have not turned over all of our ETJ to them. So just for the record, this is another piece that's going in that direction, um, so hopefully we don't get hit with some more financial losses on that.
Well, also, you need to know, I think it's important to say that the county is aware of this reapplication in the ETJ annexing, in fact, this is, the county has been made aware of this, and they are in agreement that we will transfer it.
Just wanted that out there. We've not turned over, contrary to what's been said, we've not turned over our ETJ as a whole.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likely. Okay, motion carries. Item number eight, proposed agreement for online payment services. Mr. Christian, you want to comment on this?
Sure. Um, we've had a lot of discussion internally about, um, the, having different opportunities for people to pay their bills. Particularly, online payments is something that has, uh, we've been reviewing. The proposal before you tonight would, um, transition right now. You can pay in person, you can pay over the phone, but we do not have an option to pay online. We have vetted multiple vendors, I think as many as three, um, and gone through demos and made sure that, you know, their solution would, you know, work with our financial software and things of that nature. The, it is at no cost to the city, uh, but this would be a, uh, we would have like a link on our website. You could click that link, you could log in and see your utility information, um, and be kind of public-facing, and they could go on and pay their bill for, uh, and the fee is, um, it's no cost to the city because the fee is passed on to the customer. So there's a two dollar and fifty cent fee on each transaction for that convenience, and, um, and that's the summary of the request before you tonight.
So has anybody looked at the cost that we could possibly lose due to the late fees that are being issued now? The city collects well over tens of thousands of dollars each year in late fees.
In general, or as it relates to online payments?
As it relates to late payments, I think, what, through the water department? Jill could probably answer that better than me.
Yeah.
I don't think this will affect late payments. Uh, I think the people are still going to pay as they normally would, whether they would come in or not. I don't, I don't foresee many lost revenues through late charges.
They may cut down traffic hazard.
Yeah. There's a, I mean, there's a lot of late fees that we take in that we use for the budget.
Okay. All right, I have a motion.
Will it affect the, uh, system now that's in place? Because they can pay monthly by check, right, where it comes out automatically?
Right.
Will this affect any of that?
Not, no.
Not.
Yeah, the, the ACH draft of like the checking accounts that you can set up through the city, you can always, you can still set that up, and that will occur, and I believe there's no fee for that. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so that, there will be no changes to that current method of payment.
Is that a two dollar and fifty cent fee for everyone that uses the system or for every customer?
Per transaction.
For each payment.
To the customers.
So there's not a, uh, in other words, we're not going to put a two dollar and fifty cent fee on people that are not using it?
No, it's when they go to pay it, they go through the payment portal, and before they check out, they see their bill, they enter their information, they go to checkout, they see their total with the convenience charge.
Got you.
Counsel, currently, um, those who make payments online, or those who make payments through credit card already incur a three percent convenience fee. So this is just a, a transfer. The only difference is, I think, if they pay by e-check, they'll also be the two fifty.
All right, did I have a, did I have a motion on a agreement for online payment? Need a motion. Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye. Those likewise. Thank you. Okay, move along to item number nine on consideration of twenty-one twenty-two budget requests. Mr. Christian?
Yes, counsel, Mayor, counsel. This evening, I've invited some of our department heads to answer any questions you may have about their budget requests. We're really here at your discretion to have any additional discussion that you'd like to have. The budget requests are, the capital budget requests are outlined in your packet. They're the same as when they were. We've added some additional information to it. Happy to discuss any of the specific requests that you have questions on regarding. There were some questions about types of vehicles or, you know, certain needs that the department heads may be able to speak to. I'll address a couple things really quickly. One is that, of course, we have an upcoming budget meeting in a couple of weeks. And I've invited some folks to present the meter information that we, counsel requested. And we'll probably have multiple presentations on that, just to get some different options for counsel to consider. And we've broken out the, the human resources cost of a COLA increase and added that to the information to the packet. And happy to answer any questions or have any discussion that you'd like to have.
I thought this meeting with the department heads was supposed to be at our next budget meeting.
And we could still do that.
I didn't know it was gonna be tonight.
Like we did in the, in the session that we did. I guess I thought that was gonna happen for that.
Sure, but we can still do that. We have that meeting on the calendar. I mean, we can have any discussion that y'all want to have tonight. It was requested to have department heads at the meeting to discuss budget requests. So I proceeded with that. We can continue to have them present to answer any questions you may have if you would like to ask them at a later time.
Right, I thought the, the meeting was gonna be at the next budget session, not regular city council meeting. I mean, that's just my, what I thought, I don't know.
Me, me as well. I mean, personally, I would like to have those discussions at the, at the planning meeting.
I don't see anything wrong with having it at the council meeting.
You can certainly do it.
I really, I don't see any reason. In fact, it may be better to have it at the council meeting because then the citizens can be more informed of it.
We're just here to answer your questions, if you have any. We can certainly maintain this attendance at the next budget meeting and continue to have these discussions along the process. My intention is to go from here and at the next budget meeting to also include the operational budgets at the, at the next budget meeting along with that. So that may be a little bit longer of a meeting if we're trying to look at the capital budget requests as well as the operational budget requests. We can also look at having some additional budget work sessions if, if time is, additional time is needed. We've, we've looked at some second meetings of the month, but also maybe consider some earlier work sessions in advance of the city council meeting as an alternative as well, just to make sure that we commit the time that is necessary to discuss such, you know, this is a very important policy document. So we're just available to, to answer your questions as, as needed now or in the future.
Well, I have some questions on it, but since the new chief is here, it'd be a little, I guess unfair for him until he got at the budget meeting.
He's gonna need to look at his budget and see what happens.
And I see, Anthony Moss is here, but he could, he's very qualified on it. But I, there's Chief White is here. Anything that I have to discuss, I would like to ask the question.
Certainly. My point here is that we're scheduling a budget meeting for the twenty-first of April at three thirty. If we're gonna have these people in, then we're gonna need to start earlier or we're gonna have to have supper in.
We can do whatever counsel wishes.
It's immaterial to me. What are your wishes, counsel?
I think Mr. Sellers is gonna want to ask some questions.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would like to have whoever to answer. I guess, Mr. Moss, if he'll step to the podium and answer some questions. And my, my, my question is, eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars you want for a couple of vehicles? And I think we should upgrade vehicles ever so often so we don't get caught in a bind. But why would we need the Ford Explorers? Why would the Explorer use Ford Cruisers?
What we have right now, sir, is all of our sergeants are in Ford utility vehicles. And the reason being is because they took the evidence equipment. So any stuff that's collected on scenes, they have the equipment in their vehicle. There's just not enough room in the back of the Dodge Charger to put that stuff because the weight of tire is in the trunk, it takes up all the trunk. So if we have a, say for example, if there's a murder scene, that sergeant, that shift supervisor has all the equipment in his vehicle. There's just not enough room in the Dodge Charger for it.
So there would not be any way to get, to coordinate using the, the other vehicle to be with them? For the sergeant, for his equipment that he'll need to store it?
What's that, sir?
You just need a bigger vehicle to store your equipment.
Correct, for the, and it's all, it's all the shift supervisors. We have the two Tahoe's. Both of the Tahoe's are over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. When we got those vehicles, those vehicles were previously, previously used. So the sergeants drive them, they're over a hundred and fifty thousand. They end up more time, spending more time at the shop getting repairs. They're constantly down there. We have, we have two Ford Explorers now for two shifts. It's just that the two Tahoe's, we don't, we plan on, speaking with chief, we plan on recycling those two vehicles. We don't plan on getting rid of them, but we plan on recycling those two vehicles so that they will still get use out of those vehicles. It's just that the sergeants, they work twelve hour shifts and those vehicles are way, way over mileage.
I see, well, that's a good answer. That was my question. You know, why the, a specific kind of vehicle or model of vehicle, that was my question.
Yes, sir.
And that's a very good answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have. Good for me. And I have one for the fire department, for Mr. White. Hey Calvin, I have a question. Is, would, and it is be, that F two fifty truck? Is that large enough?
Yes, sir, it is. It's, we're looking at a four door version of that truck. The reason for the two fifty instead of a one fifty is for towing capabilities. It's also large enough for firefighters to go to training sessions as a group in one vehicle. And some of our vehicles that we already have are being aged out, they have multiple years on them. Actually, we have three vehicles with over a hundred and sixty thousand miles on them. And these are station vehicles that we're using now.
They've been really good to last that long. But I was just wondering, maybe if you need a larger upgrade to another size, maybe a three fifty to pull the trailers because you pull some heavy equipment in on, would it be better to have a larger truck?
No, sir, the actual two fifty will do.
Sufficiency.
Absolutely.
On that deal. And that, I was just concerned because when you start pulling those heavy trailers, you're pulling your equipment, it can really take a toll on the vehicle.
Absolutely, it can.
And that's my question to you. Thank you, Calvin, the excellent answer.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions for him at all?
Not, not for the department heads, but, but for Matt. And I also was under the impression that this was gonna be at the budget meeting.
Sure.
But, I mean, I don't know how. Just whenever, I was gonna get with you to pass this along. I would like to see whenever we have the budget session, that the department heads bring with them like a inventory of the fleet that they have with the mileage and year models and things like that. So we can not just look and say, well, we're gonna buy two vehicles for this department or the other department. Where we can, money's tight, really, really tight right now. We all know why, we can talk about it till we're blue in the face, but we know why. But a need is where we're gonna be at in this budget, I, I feel sure. And if there's a need, then we need to get it rather than maybe a won or something like that. So if, whenever you talk to the department heads in the meeting before the budget talks, I would like to, to see that inventory of their vehicles that they have now.
How about you get that together for us and just email it out to us?
Yes, sir, I'll do that.
So we can look at it. Is there anything else that we're gonna need as far as expenses? I didn't see anything on here about the sewer plant at all. Are they not requesting anything at this time?
That's proceeding under the other agreement for services that we've hired the engineer for. So that's, that's already in the budget and is proceeding under that. And I'll provide a brief update on that in my man report.
And you say you, you've worked, working with some people about getting us some water meter programs?
Yeah, again, another, another item for discussion at the next budget meeting will be our first presentation. I've contacted two companies that can help us with the, you know, looking at our needs and, and making some improvements.
Very good, very good. Okay, anyone else got any other questions on that? If not, we'll move along. Item number ten, discussion of the Fourth of July festivities. Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir. As you all know, as Mr. McQueen just mentioned, you know, we, we all know what we're talking about with the hardships on our revenues. The Fourth of July festivities were removed from the budget last year after the sales tax was changed. Currently, that money is not in the budget. The vendor has reached out to me about, you know, whether or not we're gonna have it. That money is not in the budget currently. It's not in the next budget. And it is a, it's a very challenging situation. And I think we all understand the, the very tough dilemma that we're in. And I wanted to present that to counsel because, again, I, I have to give the vendor a response on their inquiry. And I've corresponded with each of you to kind of talk about some of the issues here. And, and, you know, of course, the money is, is one concern, but there are also other, other concerns as far as, you know, the, the public safety aspects, you know, the fireworks. Paying for the fireworks is just a piece of it. We also have to have the event safely facilitated. That's gonna involve, you know, additional police presence, traffic control, sanitation requirements. All in all, we're just in a very tight situation on that. So I wanted to present that to counsel and, and have a discussion about that.
How, how, how far up can we go and still be able to make a decision?
Yeah, I've, I, he wanted a response by the last budget meeting. He, he just got it to me very, he's very, he's pushing. He wants to know what we're gonna do because he has to order the fireworks and do some things. And I, and I bought us some time to, to be able to share some information and have some discussions. So really, the time is short. So I don't really have a good answer to that question, but as soon as possible, I think if.
Is there any, any danger at all of any conflict of interest with the vendor?
With the fireworks vendor?
No, with the vendor that you're talking about that might want to pay for it.
No, I, there, there has, there has been a company that's reached out about sponsor, potentially sponsoring the event. They actually preferred to, to use the term partnership. They, it's a company called REV, Federal Credit Union. They have about twenty-three hundred members residing in the county. But that's really uncharted territory for the county or for the city, we've never.
That needs to go by Mr. Morpheus then, we need to.
Right, we've, we've never had a sponsor of the event. I think that, you know, we could certainly have an opportunity to discuss sponsorships. But really, I think the, the, the dilemma is the same regardless. Even if someone pays for the fireworks, there are other things to consider and.
I don't know where we're gonna come up twelve thousand dollars.
Well, I think we decided last year, and I don't think the situation's gonna be any better. I think it's gonna be worse this year.
That's right.
Because we can, we took out everything we could find to cut out last year. And you can't just continue to, to cut out those same things again and get the same result.
That's right.
And I think if you're asking for a situation, and I see two issues coming forth, the sponsorship on one hand and the issue of the Fourth of July festivities. If we need to lay that out today to make a decision for the benefit of the vendor, if he's got to know, then we've got to decide where, whether we are or are not going to do it. And second, if we can't do it, are we going to allow somebody else to sponsor it?
But my understanding right now, I could be wrong, but I think if we go ahead and say okay on it, we immediately gotta give them five thousand dollars?
I believe it's six.
Six thousand dollars. What's that, thousand dollars?
It's like it's fifty percent upfront and then fifty percent no later than the day of the event is in the contract.
Well, I don't see where anything has changed from last year. We couldn't do the fireworks show last year because of the county taking six hundred and some thousand dollars out of our budget. And I can't see where anything has changed. And if we're gonna, if we got the money to do this, then I'd rather take this money and put it toward the employee bonus that we had to cut out for them last year or, or some of the, the equipment that we had to lay aside because we didn't have the money. How, how, how could we find the money to do this when we didn't have the money to do it last year? And to me, it'd be a slap in the face to our city employees to do it and cut them out of a little, their little budget, uh, Christmas bonus that, that missed out on last year and things like that. I, I just, as far as the competition, I think there could be some problems with the other bank in town or the state employees credit union or BBNT. If we get tied up with this, whatever this name of this company is. Far as I'm concerned, if I got to vote on it tonight to give him an answer, the answer is no. That's just how I feel about it.
I, I totally agree.
Why don't you call the county and see if they'll sponsor the thing and pay for the entire, entire thing, including employees, overtime pay that we have to have and all that. And if they want, if they want to give us the money, you know, maybe we can look at that and proceed. But I doubt they're gonna do that, so.
And for all practical purposes, purposes, this is a no-go.
Okay, well, the money's not in the budget and counsel's direction is clear and we'll proceed accordingly.
You know, Eddie, Eddie's got a good point. Why don't we come to a consensus where we look back at what the last fireworks cost? Get the cost of it, send it to the county and ask them they're gonna be willing to foot the bill for that. It's because of them we can't do it. There are seventeen, twenty thousand people watching fireworks and there ain't but about a quarter of those, if that's, from the city.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
But it ain't right and send it to our.
A lot of the county.
A request to pay for it.
A lot of the people that come to this show are from the county anyway. Last year, the citizens of Hamlet footed the bill under the circumstances that we're in now. The county put us in it, let them help us get out of it.
Well, not to, from the side of that, but the other thing that Matt mentioned, I, I wanted to kind of get a little background information on somebody. And this is not to say not to do what you suggested as the county, but we both know that that's gonna fall on deaf ears.
That's gonna.
And the individual company that has, you know, spoken, we don't get an offer from many of our corporate citizens in Hamlet to participate with us in projects that are community oriented. And, you know, the big push has been for companies and corporations to integrate themselves into the communities where they're located. And, you know, I'm, I don't know anything about the people who, I don't, the REV credit union don't know anything about it. But I think when somebody steps up and offers to do something, that maybe they raise the bar for the other people in the community. Maybe that means that the BBNT or the federal credit, state employees credit union, or somebody might say, "Look, folks, there's a new guy in town and they're pitching in to become a good corporate citizen." And, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need to, and I don't know all the circumstances about this or, or what. And I, I would obviously defer to Mr. Morpheus. But if they're not asking anything in return except to sponsor a community event, should we be so quick to say, "No, we don't want your help"? I mean, we can't pay for it, that's obvious. They made sure of that last year. But, and they're obviously not, you know, there's no money there this year, not on April the sixth, that wasn't there last year. But should we not explore the avenue of offering somebody else who's gonna be a corporate citizen in this town? Offer them the opportunity? Offer them the opportunity to, to do something? I just, I don't know, maybe.
Do we have any idea of the, the cost associated with the public safety, the police fire and things like that?
I'd have to look up that information.
That could get, I agree with what you said, Ms. Covington, and by all means, definitely, I, I, I understand that, but.
My understanding was that that was what we were looking at, was, uh, them funding it.
As long as.
I know.
Are we gonna have the available money to pay for the, the extra police, the firemen, the public works that may have to clean up things, um, such as that?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to get that information. Um, uh, it is a, I, I think one of the things, and I, I appreciate the discussion and I think everyone is, is on the same page. I mean, I think the reality of the situation is, you know, we're gonna be dealing with dilemmas like this until something changes. Um, on every little issue, uh, it's gonna be this hard every time. Um, and it's really, really tough and I, I just, it's, it's outside of our control. I think that the, you know, as it relates to the credit union or kind of some of the uncharted territory of sponsorship and some of those things, I mean, that's all new. And I think that those opportunities will continue to exist with this corporate, um, resident. Um, they, they went well out of their way to make sure that they just wanted to be involved. And this was just the first thing that's come up. And I think that we certainly need to be considerate of some of the, you know, just have clear expectations about what that means. And, um, it's tough to do all of that and discuss all these very tough issues about what we can afford and what we can't afford. So, you know, in summary, I just, I just wanted to mention that, you know, this is gonna, this is gonna continue to happen, um, until something changes. Um, but the, the credit union, um, they are, um, just, uh, no one really knows who they are, but they, they wrote me a really, a nice email today just to kind of give you a highlight, which is that, uh, you know, this isn't it, you know, from them, you know, they're, they're willing to be a part of our community. They, they just wanna help. Um, so it's kind of a, to everyone's point, it's, it's a challenge. And I don't think this opportunity ends today, but we do have a short-term decision to make about what we do about the Fourth.
And just one thing I'd like to add, um, and, and the discussion I think's been very helpful because really whether you have corporate sponsorships is a different question than the Fourth of July matter. And the short answer on corporate sponsorships is yes, the city can do that. I think, and this is a little bit what I'm hearing, is the city would do well to take time to come up with some sort of policy, uh, so that other folks who may want to participate in the community, uh, understand what the, the ground rules are. Um, but I think once that's in place, then yes, you could start receiving funds, uh, in this way if that's what the city council wanted to do.
I think it'd be worth looking into.
Would you suggest that policy before accepting this?
Well, I, the question I would ask is, has the credit union offered to essentially pay all the costs? You know, if they're paying just the fireworks, but you still have, I'm just making up numbers, ten thousand dollars in, in employee overtime costs, you might say we can't afford it anyway.
Well, and that, and that was my point.
Yeah. Um, and so I, I, I think, and I, obviously I haven't been involved in the discussion. Um, I don't think you'd wanna accept the sponsorship if we're not gonna be able to do the, uh, the event. Um, and so my sense would be unless you all felt comfortable that Hamlet could afford, uh, the Fourth of July program, then it makes sense to say, "We can't do it this time, but, you know, thank you, credit union for offering, very generous." And then come up with a policy so that the next time you have the opportunity, we're, we're ready to go.
Have we even enforced COVID regulations with masks and, uh, uh, separation six feet apart or whatever it is? I mean, have, we can't enforce it?
Well, that, that's a whole other question.
I know it is, but that's part of what we'd have to deal with.
You're, you're exactly right, sir.
We're probably asking for trouble. Council, uh, what do you think? We ought to just thank these people for offering to help on this particular item? But, uh, I, I can't see where we're gonna get the extra.
Well, it's a point well taken. Um, you know, we have corporate sponsorships, uh, the Little League teams and things like that, so.
Probably need that anyway.
We're kind of already in this ballgame. This was, is a much bigger ticket. But, um, if we're gonna stay in this kind of dire financial straits, which I don't see any relief in sight at the moment, we need to develop some alternative, you know, corporate involvement in our community. We, if, like, we have a huge deal planned out there. We have InViva out there. And obviously we've got a, a financial institution that's gonna be in town and they're interested in being good corporate citizens. Let's, let's come up with a policy that's pretty simple about, you know, this is the, this is what's necessary to involve you as a corporate sponsor in our community. And, um, so that the next time we have a situation like this, we'll be able to avail ourselves of it.
Yeah. I make a motion that we don't go forward with the fireworks.
I'll second it.
We, uh, and we include that the manager and staff work on a policy about corporate sponsorships.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Any further? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise. Thank you. That was a good discussion. I don't know where, I don't know where we're going with this COVID thing. We don't, you know, it's up and down from week to week. Um, I've had several requests this past week. I don't know how many of y'all have been called. I've been called three times about wanting to use the gym and I'm just telling them it's not, we're not in that position. And the last request I got was from the pickleball people that said, "Hey, there's only about ten or twelve of us playing. We need the space." And I said, "Huh, we're gonna talk to manager." But, uh, I don't know what our plans are on that right at the present time, other than keeping it closed. Any comment on that?
Yes, sir. I was gonna mention it in my manager's report, but we're gonna, we're continuing a phased reopen of various aspects of city hall. Um, the city hall administration side is open. Uh, we're looking at preparing in the next month, opening up the utility billing side. Uh, but we're trying to make sure that we're prepared with the supplies and the policies and the, and the protocols to make sure that we're still being responsible in respect of of COVID. Um, in terms of the rental of the facilities, some of those, uh, have come my way. For the indoor ones, we have continued to say we're not there yet. For the outdoor ones, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at making sure that if we have some clear expectations, uh, that, that we're, you know, may consider allowing some of those. But at this ti- excuse me, at this time, we have not rented out any of our public facilities.
Thank you. Anybody else had any comments on that? Uh, if not, we'll move along to item number eleven. We got the approval of tax releases.
I make a motion to approve tax release.
Got a motion to accept tax releases?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Those likewise. And now, since I stepped on your toes, it's time for manager's report. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll just make it shorter. Um, you know, I, I wanna address, uh, a couple of things that came up in the public comment. Uh, really primarily the city council information contact info has been added to the website, so that's been addressed. And I've talked to each of you about that and I confirmed that, uh, just a moment ago. Um, I wanna welcome our new police chief, Mr. Brown, and thank the department heads for, uh, coming tonight and, um, and other staff for all the work they do every day. Um, you know, we haven't been, you know, we may have been closed to the public in, to some extent, but our folks have been at work, uh, every day, um, and we're, you know, trying to keep everything going. And our folks are doing a great job at that. Uh, I want to mention that the baseball, uh, reservation or the, uh, registration was very, very well received, very, um, it's very exciting to see the energy and people are eager to do that. And, uh, we've had multiple meetings. We had, we registered about two hundred, uh, children and we were able to, um, um, have teams in every age group. You know, sometimes it's harder to get some age groups over others, uh, but we're able to have, uh, teams in every age group. And we're really excited about having a good season and, um, and helping, you know, hopefully, you know, vaccines are more available. Case counts are a little up and down, but hopefully they keep trending in the right direction, in the downward direction. And we can use this as, uh, a way to ease into, uh, some of the, uh, what's next, uh, whatever that may be. But we're certainly mindful and respectful of, of the guidelines and the safety aspects of that. Uh, the next budget session, as we've already discussed, is February twenty-first at three thirty.
April.
A- April, sorry, I, I don't know why I said February. Uh, but yeah, it's in a little under two weeks or a little over two weeks. And, um, of course, the public's invited to attend that. Um, in the wastewater arena, we have submitted our preliminary engineering report and our environmental assessment to USDA for the expansion of the sewer plant. Those comments have been returned, um, and then we revised the document and have sent it back. And so, uh, hopefully we start to learn, after those documents get approved, we start to learn more about the funding aspects and how much is grant and loan and those kind of things. Uh, we know those things, um, very soon. Um, that is the, uh, conclusion of my report. Um, I was gonna mention the COVID stuff, but again, uh, city hall, if you need us, you can come in. We kind of have a staging area and one at a time in the admin building or the admin side. And we're gonna continue a structured reopening, um, you know, just kind of being mindful of how things go.
Okay, thank you. Anyone got any questions for the city manager tonight?
I have one about, you said the, uh, the, the budget meeting will be open to the public?
The budget, all, all public, all meetings are, are open to the public.
Including the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clarify, I wanted that clarified on some people.
Yes, sir.
I hope people would attend and could put, give us an input for their, how we spend their money.
They will any other time.
Yeah.
I don't know why they would hesitate.
Takes the fun away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't talk about the decision.
Okay, moving along, comments, council, Ms. Covington?
Um, mine are quick. I just want to welcome our new police chief. I want to thank our interim chief. You all did a great job, you know, you kept, kept the show running and kept it running well. Thank our department heads and representatives for being here tonight. Sorry we had a little bit of confusion, you know, we got our feet wet. Um, also, they had another food truck event downtown. They sponsored from the, um, business bureau. And Michelle's working really hard. Michelle Pressler's put together an excellent online presentation for the depot and she continues to do the food truck Fridays and I think that's great. Super excited about two hundred kids being registered in our recreation department. Been a lot of positive comments about that. And, you know, when everything else seems to have gone south and we haven't been able to do anything about it, I think we have found a point where we can give our citizens something for their taxes. And, you know, two hundred kids and a lot of kids to register, so I'm really, really excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
I would like to, uh, thank and welcome Chief Brown. All the department heads, thank you for the great job you do. Mr. Moss, thanks for coming in. I like those dark uniforms. They look sharp, buddy. Thank you, Calvin. Great job, fellas, you do. And, uh, I'm, I, I agree with Abby. I'm so, I'm just so proud that the motion came up at the last meeting to get this baseball program going. Thank you, uh, Councilman McQueen for bringing that up to the table and it took off like a flash and we knew it'd be needed. Thank you for the suggestion and the motion on it.
Thank you.
And I'm just absolutely, uh, thrilled that we got, uh, such a good program going. I'd also like to offer my condolences to the mayor, uh, for the loss of his father-in-law and to your wife. Please pass them on to London for me.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to thank my fellow, the colleagues and all the interested people here for a job, for having a well, just a well-constructed meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, I think we all probably gonna ditto a lot of things tonight, but, uh, welcome to the police chief. Definitely looking forward to conversations about community relations, so definitely looking forward to that. Um, the baseball, you know, I'm glad that we set the tone. Thank you guys for that. As you can see, that other cities are not following suit. So we, we set the tone and I'm glad that, you know, we, we definitely did that. Everybody's here looking professional from the, from the, from the fire chief and, and police department and so forth. Thank you guys for showing up and, uh, we just look for, we, we love, we wanna see you. We'd like to see you and see what's going on. If nothing else, just letting us know what's going on in the departments and how things are going and, uh, making sure that our city employees are, uh, doing well. And last but not least, I always say it from day one, I thank my citizens for coming out. I wish we could, you know, I know it's COVID times, but after that, I'd love to see a full house with, uh, citizens coming out and just telling us their concerns and talking about their communities. Um, I love that. And when they, when you come out and show, it shows interest that we will make some kind of effort to, uh, make sure that things get done. So, thank you all to the citizens. And last but not least, to all the city employees, we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
Mayor, may I mention one thing?
Sure.
I wanna thank you for your interest in your community.
Absolutely.
I think it's awesome. I know it's frustrating. I've been down that road with you. I know what it's like. But by the same token, I suppose these laws are designed to protect people from overbearing governments. But what happens to those of us who try to do right and have a decent community and decent homes and property and take responsibility for what we have, but I applaud you and your neighbors and, you know, I wish there was a quick fix. But, um, maybe you can start a community program. And maybe you can invite this guy from around the corner, come over and help pick up bricks in your driveway. And so you can get in your driveway, ask him to come help you. Maybe, you know, since we can't do anything legally and our hands are our time, but, um, I just, I'm glad that we have people who are really taking responsibility and come every month and talk about the shape and the condition of the houses in your community. Make people aware, make some better citizens.
And I didn't get an opportunity to say it, uh, before, but I really do appreciate your attentiveness and your interest in our concerns. And you can bet I will be back.
Just stay on it. Stay on it. Sometimes that's more effective than anything we can do.
Are you done, Mr. Stewart? Okay, uh, Mr. Martin?
Uh, Ms. Covington and, uh, Mr. Sellers have said basically everything that I would have said. Uh, I, but I do want to personally congratulate and welcome our new chief of police, Dennis Brown. I'm looking forward to meeting him and having a conversation with him in one thing and another. Also, I'm, I'm very, very pleased with the, with the baseball registration turnout. I just love to see young people play ball, especially baseball and football. That's my two favorite sports. But I'm just glad to see it happening this year and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the little fellows play. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McQueen?
Uh, I'm not gonna say what they said, but I could just as easily do that. Uh, congratulations and welcome, chief. Um, we have a mutual friend in law enforcement and I've heard already a lot of good comments about you. And I look forward to what you can offer to the city, um, for a long time to come. Um, I will echo what Ms. Covington said with Ms. Williams. Um, if you can't come, get somebody else to come. Hold our feet to the fire where we can try to hold everybody else to the fire. Although it's gonna be like a, a, a race involving some turtles. Hopefully we can get you, um, satisfied there. And it is a shame that people, and not just your community, but every community, take no pride in their community anymore. And I apol- I apologize to you for having to live beside that residence.
I am acutely aware that the wheels of justice grind very slowly, so I am patient.
Absolutely. Um, of course, everybody that came, all the department heads and, um, things of that nature. Uh, I'd like to give props to Anthony in the back. Uh, did a good job managing the department and keeping it going. And also, a lot of people might not know it, but he, um, Captain Moss takes pride in the community and works with kids and sports programs and things like that. And Maurice mentioned community relations and things with the chief. What, what that man's doing right there is gonna make a difference. Not only as an officer, but as that mentor and somebody that's helping the, the kids. And I can't say anything else about the baseball that hadn't been said. Um, I hope and pray that it, it goes off without any issues. I hope everybody, uh, follows the rules. And I hope we're able to go forward with the next sporting event and try to get back to some normalcy while being safe.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Uh, over the past month, I've had two requests from people wanting to know why we haven't opened a library. We don't have any control over that. It's between the county and the Sand Hill Library. We don't have any control over that, it's between the county and the Sand Hill Library, uh, people, and I, I don't know what the issue is now, they say, the word that I've gotten is that they're saying they're gonna be closed because the county says that county's still closed, so I don't know, but it's, it's not up to the city of Hamlet, it's up to those people. And, uh, so, I guess they'll decide when they want to open. Baseball, same thing, we're glad to have it, we're glad we've got two hundred participants, that's wonderful. Uh, Captain Moss, thank you again for taking on this, uh, job in the interim, and we appreciate the work you have done on that. And, uh, yeah. And Chief Brown, welcome, you, uh, got some big shoes to fill and, uh, a lot of work ahead of you, but, uh, hang in there, you got the council, the manager behind you, so that's good. And, uh, uh, Chief White, thank you, sir, appreciate all the work you've done, appreciate the work in the fire department, it's, uh, it's terrific, the fire department, and, uh, couldn't ask anything else, you just keep a good ship on, uh, afloat over there. That's right, thank you. And, uh, with that, uh, we will move on to motion to go into closed session per general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three and six, attorney-client privilege and personnel matter. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, thank you.